Good evening and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I would like to call this meeting to order. I would like to emphasize a couple of items that you heard. Please silence all electronic devices. And in an effort to have sufficient time to hear from the audience members, we ask that when you come to the podium, please identify yourself and state your address. Limit comments to five minutes, and please ensure you are delivering new testimony to the commissioners. At this time, we will approve the consent agenda. Denise, please read the items.
Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself for the consent agenda as well as item number nine and 10 on the regular agenda.
Thank you.
Item one, approval of February 1st, 2017, minutes of regular meeting. Item two, February Platts. Item three, 4674, 2016, rezoned from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban O Office and C1 Commercial Pedestrian Oriented Districts to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District for allowed forms located at the northwest corner of East 26th Street and South Cliff Avenue. Item four, 6120, 2016, rezoned from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density O Office and AG Agriculture District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar LW Live Work and RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban Districts for allowed forms located at the southeast corner of South Southeastern Avenue and East 69th Street. Item five, 6244, 2017, rezoned from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the C3 Commercial Regional District for allowed forms located at 201 North Kowanus Avenue. Item six, 6256, 2017, rezoned from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District for allowed forms located east of South Sycamore Avenue, north of East Taylor Street, and west of South Capitol Item seven, 6313, 2017, rezoned from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban and RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban Districts to the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban and RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban Districts and allowed forms located at west of South Six Mile Road and future East 45th Street. Item eight, 6319, 2017, rezoned from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential, C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar, and RS Single Family Residential Suburban Districts to the CN Conservation and O Office Districts for allowed forms located south of West Landscape Place, west of South Minnesota Avenue, and north of South Garden Court. Item nine, 6320, 2017, rezoned from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density for allowed forms located east of Veterans Parkway and west of Silverthorn Avenue. Item 10, 6337, 2017, rezoned from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban and O Office Districts to the S2 Institutional Campus PUD for allowed forms located south of East 24th Street, east of South 10th Avenue, and west of South Cliff Avenue. Item 11, 6345, 2017, rezoned from the O Office District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District located at 1740 South St. Michael's Circle. Item 12, 6350, 2017, rezoned from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban, CN Conservation, and RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban Districts to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban, CN Conservation, and RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban Districts located north of West 41st Street and west of Lancaster Drive. Item 13, 6353, 2017, rezoned from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density District for allowed forms located at 1801 South Bonson Avenue. Item 14, 6354, 2017, rezoned from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the I1 Light Industrial District for allowed forms located at the southeast corner of East Mulberry Street and North Sherman Avenue. Item 15, 6121, 2016, preliminary subdivision plan for Maple Rock addition located at the southeast corner of South Southeastern Avenue and East 69th Street. Item 16, 6335, 2017, preliminary subdivision plan for Westview Estates addition located at the northwest corner of South Katy Avenue and west Laverne Whiff Street.
Thank you. Before we vote on the consent agenda, I would ask if there's anyone in the audience who would object to any of the items 1 through 16. If so, please come forward to the microphone and let us know that. We will move it to the regular agenda for appropriate discussion.
Jason Bieber with Planning Staff. We have received a request to move items number three, nine, and also item number 10 to the regular agenda.
Okay, thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Do we have an amendment for moving those items to the regular agenda?
I'd like to amend the consent agenda, moving items three, nine, and 10 to the regular agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend, moving items three, nine, and 10 to the regular agenda. We'll vote on that first. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, now we'll vote on the primary item of the consent agenda as amended. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved, so items 1 through 16, except for items number three, nine, and 10, are now approved. And if you're here to represent those items, you are free to go. You're also free to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting. So now we move on to item number three of the regular agenda as amended.
Item three.
Pardon me, Mr. Chair, did you want to approve the regular agenda?
Oh, very true. We do need to approve the content of the regular agenda. Thank you for the reminder. I would entertain a motion to that effect.
Motion for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the regular agenda with the addition of items number three, nine, and 10. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the regular agenda content signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Item three, 4674, 2016, rezoned from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban O Office and C1 Commercial Pedestrian Oriented Districts to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District for allowed forms located at the northwest corner of East 26th Street and South Cliff Avenue.
Jason Bieber representing Planning Staff. This is an application by Eric Willardson. It is located at the northwest corner of South Cliff and East 26th Street. The applicant, or the owner is proposing to raise the existing gas station that's on the corner there, and then utilize the existing parcels and construct a new holiday gas station pushed closer to South 10th Avenue. As you know, East 26th Street and North Cliff Avenue are classified as limited access arterial streets. The concept plan that's submitted by the applicant is indicating an access on the South 10th Avenue, one access on the East 26th Street, and one access on the South Cliff Avenue. This is, there currently are two accesses for the existing gas station on 26th and two on Cliff, so they're reducing the accesses. They are also working with engineering with acquiring some more right-of-way to construct a D cell lane along Cliff Avenue to be able to get into this specific site. The site plan indicates the required 10-foot front yard setbacks off of South 10th, East 26th, and South Cliff Avenue. The building is currently located in the southeast corner, immediately adjacent to 26th and Cliff. The proposed concept plan has that building being pushed to the northwest a significant amount with the proposed canopy for the gas pumps to the east of that. A level-C buffer yard will be required along the west property line to those houses that are across South 10th Avenue. This buffer yard does include a 30-foot setback, which you can include half the right-of-way, so essentially a 15-foot buffer yard setback. And then they'll have a four-foot berm or six-foot fence, and then 40 units of landscaping for every 100 lineal feet. The proposed zoning does meet the Shakesu Falls Comprehensive Plan. This intersection was reclassified as part of the 2040 Shakesu Falls Comprehensive Plan update. It is now indicated as a neighborhood employment center. This employment center contains commercial and office uses, which you have on three or two of the corners, between the major arterials, 26th and Cliff, and then usually the first major access point, which is South 10th Avenue. Further expanding the site for the gas station and pushing it to the northwest should alleviate some of the existing access issues with getting into the site and utilizing the existing gas station. And finally, that level-C buffer yard should help alleviate any of the incompatibility between this gas station and the existing homes to the west across South 10th Avenue. If the rezoning of this subject property is approved, then they can construct the gas station as kind of indicated in this proposed concept plan. If it is denied, then the gas station will probably stay as is, and there'll be some vacant lots that are currently zoned single-family. Because the subject application is consistent with the Shakesu Falls Comprehensive Plan, staff does recommend approval of this rezoning, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from commissioners? Are there any audience members that would like to speak to this item? Come forward and, or I guess I should say the applicant. Are you the applicant?
That would be me.
Very good, thank you.
Good evening, my name's Eric Willardson with Willardson on Engineering. Here representing the owners of the property, Tam Corporation and I-90 Fuel Services. As Jason has so eloquently presented it to you, yes, we are going to raise the existing store and create a new one. I would just add too that this owner has also purchased the existing office building that's located on South 10th Avenue and East 26th, and would use that as an office for I-90 Fuel Services. It is what I'm led to believe. As Jason had indicated, we do require a level-C buffer yard for the car wash, and we will, my understanding is, be back in front of you for a conditional use permit if this rezoning is approved for the car wash, because it's within 250 feet of those houses to the west. This entire two blocks, and I'm also here representing Avera on the rezoning to the north of this, this entire block has essentially been raised. Avera's constructed a parking lot, which you can see a little bit of it on our site plan. All the houses, with the exception of two down on the corner of 10th and 24th Street, have been raised already. Avera intends to expand their campus to the north. They're fully in approval of our plan, on board with what my owners are seeking to do. Back in January, the city council vacated the alley that runs down the middle of the block. We have worked with three utility companies that have overhead power and communications in the alley. To eliminate those, have granted them new easements around the outside of the property to relocate their systems. Just as a side note, the convenience store would remain a 24-hour convenience store. The car wash hours would be limited from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Other than that, as Jason indicated, we have worked with engineering. Engineering has indicated they would like to acquire up to 50 feet of right-of-way on Cliff Avenue and 45 on 26th Street, and our site plan accommodates that with them. We're, like I said, still working that out. Obviously, everything depends on the rezoning and the conditional use permits process. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, and again, I'll be here for item number 10 as well.
Any commissioner questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, are there any audience members that would like to speak to this item? Not seeing any. We'll move into a potential motion.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Item nine, 6320, 2017, rezoned from RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density for allowed forms located east of Veterans Parkway and west of Silverthorn Avenue.
The applicant here is proposing to rezon roughly the 2.23 acres to the RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density District, and they're looking at combining these 2.23 acres with the existing area that's zoned RA2. Their proposal is to construct four three-story, 48-unit apartment buildings with some surface parking and also some garages. The proposed zoning does meet the Shakesu Falls Comprehensive Plan. The proposed 2.23 acres of RA2 will be combined with the existing 9.47 acres that is currently zoned RA2 to create multifamily development. The development should provide the necessary transition from the significant traffic that is and will certainly be in the future on South Veterans Parkway to the west, and then there will be still an existing row of twin homes to the east of these apartments, and then finally to the existing and proposed single-family homes to the east of South Silverthorn Avenue. Further, traffic, parking, and other external effects are directed away from the lower-density residential areas. Traffic will flow north or south on South Silverthorn Avenue to East 26th Street, which is an arterial street to the north, or to East 33rd Street to the south, which is considered a major collector. Further, these apartment complexes will be located in the center of the lot with one-story garages on the exterior. That should help fit in better with one-story or two-story houses that are to the east. If the rezoning of this property is approved, the 2.23 acres can be added to the existing 9.47 acres currently zoned RA2 Apartment Residential, and a moderate-density multifamily development can be constructed on the 11 acres. The rezoning is denied, the 2.23 acres will still be zoned RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential, and the existing 9.47 acres that currently exist out there can still be used for apartments, moderate-density apartment residential. However, they'd probably be tweaking their site plan and maybe reducing the units of some sort. Because the subject application is consistent with the Shakesu Falls Comprehensive Plan, staff does recommend approval of this rezoning, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any commissioner questions?
Mr. Chair, I do have one question. Can you point out again the access, how people will be driving in and out?
Those two little slivers that you see in this area, those will be the access points to the apartment complex off of South Silverthorn Avenue. You can kind of see here at the concept plan. And then most likely, traffic will be heading north to 26th Street or south when East 33rd Street is constructed to get out to Veterans Parkway.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Jason. Is the applicant here? Come on forward and state your name and address.
Hi, Braden Nises, Bender Commercial Real Estate, 122 South Phillips Avenue. I represent the potential buyer of this property. Couple weeks ago, we held a neighborhood meeting to kind of let them know what our plan is, and some of the concerns they brought up was having high-rise apartments in this neighborhood, which would bring high traffic to the area. Another concern was having tax credit housing, which our buyer would be putting up market rent, a market rent project. Earlier this week, we met with Shannon Austin and Chuck Service to discuss kind of the traffic issues, and with that, we, Shannon addressed that 33rd would be a major collector, and Silverthorn is a minor collector, which the projected traffic that would come with our project would be able to handle, or Silverthorn would be able to handle that amount of traffic. Yeah, like Jason said, we are leaving the twin home as a buffer yard between our apartments at RA2 and then into the residential on the other side. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any questions.
Any commissioner questions of the applicant? Seeing none, thank you. Are there any audience members that would like to speak to this item? If so, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Randy Joyce. My wife and I, Barb, live directly across the street from the greenway on this proposed project, and I'd like to make a couple of comments, if I could, please. When we first saw this proposal, we just moved there two years ago and built a home right across from this, understanding Good Sam was going to put up a complex across the street. We all laughed about it as we aged, that's where we were going to go and live, and so that changed, and they made change to move further south onto a bigger property. As a result, we had a neighborhood meeting and discovered that the majority of this land is already currently zoned as for apartments, okay? So at first, when I first thought about that, as I started discovering that little strip along here, which is the two-some acres that you're considering tonight to rezon, I thought the better chance we have as homeowners living right across the street to create a buffer, if you will, and start looking at the plan for Sioux Falls, it was designed that way, along that greenway, to have twin homes or duplexes on either side of that. We talked with a builder, and he's from North Dakota, and I don't know him at all other than meeting him that night, and he said, well, after hearing what the neighbors had to say about traffic, the biggest issue is going to be traffic, dumping all that traffic out onto Silverthorn. So a suggestion was made, my suggestion, I don't know if it's supported by everyone in the neighborhood, although there's very few that's here tonight, so I'm going to speak in behalf of myself and Kyle Johnson, the neighbor just across. Could you take a look at that, sir? I don't know if you can put that up on the screen. If not, I have just a few copies of that suggestion. The idea would be, in talking with, and I've gotten fairly informed about the process of Sioux Falls in the last couple of weeks, talked to Mr. Van Buskirk today, who was the developer of that property, put in Copper Creek, talk went down with Braden and his boss on Monday, talked with the engineering department, I've talked with the representatives of Good Sam, who are selling the property, all of whom are intending to want to try and make this a good situation for all of us. We realize that's going to happen, there's going to be something in there other than Good Sam, probably apartments of some sort. However, in looking at the traffic, the biggest issue is one of, if we dump all that traffic out onto Silverthorn, while it's, they call it an arterial street to absorb traffic on up south, there's still going to be a lot of traffic. Everybody has indicated, people make choices. You aren't going to direct them all going right or to the south coming out of that complex. So we're going to go up Silverthorn around onto Schaefer, on up to 26th, and then across town, into town. All of that takes traffic by our house, when in fact, the proposal I have is that we would go across that greenway directly into Schaefer. The engineering department is indicating there's no reason, from their standpoint, that can't be done. There's going to be curb cuts getting in there for this other piece of RD1 up there. So my question comes to this, is that, yes, there's going to be additional costs to take it across a greenway because of the culverts, and I know that's not what you're here for to decide, and I understand that. I just want to get on record, when I talked to Mr. Van Buskirk today, he said, as you go forth through this process, be sure you've expressed at least your concerns, because I didn't realize that Matt, the builder, wouldn't be here tonight. I thought we'd have some dialogue, I will, between the next meeting and talk about this some more. I've given him copies of all this. No one knows what that cost might be. However, whatever that cost is, in talking with Mr. Van Buskirk today, a very experienced builder, developer in this city, he's indicated it'd be a small amount relative to the overall cost of the project, and more importantly, to the benefit of the homeowners. So my, I have not much time left, and so what I will say to you tonight is that, on first blush, I was totally opposed to rezoning this little piece. It's along a greenway where both people building homes, twin homes, would like to have a greenway in their backyard. However, if it went across and they exited some of that traffic to Schaefer, I would be supportive of this. If not, I'm on record as saying I would be against it at this point, and might ask for your, I guess not denial, but deferral on this action until we have more time to study that and work with the builder.
Okay. Any questions? Are there any questions from commissioners? Okay, thank you. Are there other audience members that would like to speak to this item?
My name's Tom Von Holzlem. I live at 217 South Abbey Stone Court. We moved here in September, and we did quite an extensive search online prior to coming here from the east coast. We're originally from Minnesota, and we're coming back to the home country. Sioux Falls is certainly a great draw with the medical community that's here, and the, I call it Minnesota nice, now I call it South Dakota nice. We're moving back here from South Jersey. But at any rate, we chose that particular area to move into, and we are well aware that all the open cornfields, we saw the roads and the various culverts, large culverts there, so we knew there was going to be more development, but our expectation, we did not hit, we were not aware in any way, shape, or form that there was going to be an apartment complex there. So our concern is, will it affect, negatively affect the property values, even to me, living on the interior of that Abbey Stone Court? And certainly, I'm in support of the prior gentleman that talked, the traffic that is in that neighborhood now coming off of Schaefer off of 26th or down from 33rd Street is nothing. It is to be expected traffic. It is not going to be expected traffic anymore if those units go up. So I certainly support that driveway, and of course, if I had my druthers, I would rather not have it rezoned and remain totally single residential. Thank you. Any questions?
Although a clarification, I think Jason told us that the current property is zoned for apartments currently, so that's not for consideration tonight.
It's a done deal.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from the audience?
Good evening, Kyle Johnson. My wife and I live at 2108 South Silverthorn Avenue, neighbor of Randy's, as well as the other neighbors in here right now. Yeah, we moved into the neighborhood close to five years ago, and of course, like everybody else, our hope and dream was a Good Sam across the road from us. That's not going to happen. We understand. That's not going to happen. We understand that the current zoning is RA2. I think our concern with that is the traffic. I just, I don't know if the proper studies have been done on Silverthorn and Schaefer leading on to 26th Street. Very difficult in the mornings, very difficult in the evenings. Certainly not what we planned for when we bought our dream house in that neighborhood. I think Randy presented an option for us of possibly rerouting that traffic through Schaefer, might eliminate some of the concerns. That might make me more in favor of the possible rezone. Otherwise, I too would not be in favor of rezoning that land and creating more traffic. I believe the current zone was the four properties on it with 190-some apartments. I think that would be a considerable amount of added traffic, let alone the next zone. But maybe the option is, as Randy pointed out, I'd ask that we look at that in further and see what we can do. Thank you for your time, and if there's any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for the citizen? No? Okay. Any other comments from the audience?
Hi, I'm Mary Jo Christianson. I live at 2032 South Abbey Stone, and we've lived there about nine years. Yeah, we also thought that Good Sam was going in, and we're joking the same as the others about that would be our next move. I really am concerned about the density. I know you call it moderate, but if it's four buildings with 48 units, that's like a town of people. And if you call 33rd a collector street, Silverthorn will be a collector street for all of those people. With just like two people per apartment, or maybe even more, possibly more. That's a lot of traffic for Silverthorn. Now, the people that live out there, the house values are probably from 300 to 500, 600,000 dollars. I think they weren't expecting to have all that density, all those, all that extra traffic. And there's really, not really a good solution. I know that you're never going to put traffic out onto Veterans Parkway. But I think, and even though they say that it meets the plans of the Shakes Sioux Falls and all that, people don't put houses, you know, nice developments, spend a lot of money on their yards, and then have 200, 300 people living right across the street. So I'm just really totally do not favor this, this plan at all. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from the Commissioners? No? Thank you. Is there another?
Hi, my name is Kathy Swenson, and I live at 2204 South Silverthorn Avenue. I guess my biggest concern is traffic, as you've heard before. I remember the neighbors were here maybe in the fall, when there was a sport complex that was trying to be put through right across the street. And I just remember that one of, and it was denied, the permission was not given. And I remember one of the greatest reasons it was denied was because of the traffic. And this was a sports complex. This wasn't apartment buildings adding 200, 300 more vehicles. This was just a sports complex. And so I guess I'm wondering, at that time, you didn't feel like the area could handle the traffic, and so now it can. And I understand it's rezoned, and I'm accepting the fact that Good Sam isn't going to be there. When we moved out there nine years ago, we were told they would be there, but things change. And, you know, you just have to go with the changes and accept them and move on. But traffic is really a concern of mine. I'm not quite across from one of the driveways, but I'm pretty close. And I'm worried about parking on the street. You know, I'm just worried about snow removal. But what I have the greatest problem understanding is the fact that it was denied then for this complex, and now it's being considered. And the reason it was denied was because of the access to get out on Schaefer, onto 26th Street. And I knew that people could use 33rd. I once in a while take 33rd, and there's quite a hill going to the south on the west lane, and it makes it really difficult to see cars, so there'll have to be probably a streetlight or a stoplight put out there. But that's, I don't know anything about that. But so I guess just my question and my thoughts are, one thing was denied, and now we're, you know, kind of looking at things that are going to really, really cause a lot more traffic, and our properties will be devalued. No matter what someone wants to tell you, we had a realtor out a few months ago, and he said absolutely, you know, they will be devalued. So I guess we'll live with that, but that's my concern, and, you know, thanks for listening.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay. Any other comments from the audience? Staff?
Jeffrey Schmidt, representing planning staff this evening. I thought before, it looked like everybody was done, I'd come up and answer some questions if planning Commissioners have any questions for me. But the reoccurring theme was traffic, so I was just looking through Jason's staff report. We have four 48-unit apartment buildings, so we have 188 units. And again, I'm just trying to analyze this quickly so the neighbors can go home with some information versus, they were asking, someone should look at this. My understanding is that we have had traffic look at it. I think the applicant, as well as staff, said that traffic engineering has looked at this. Silverthorn does have the ability to handle the traffic. I know that's a concern about increased traffic, but as we move forward, and again, this is another reason why I wanted to come up here. If this item is approved or denied tonight, it will go forward to City Council on April 4th. And so as we get ready for an April 4th City Council meeting, whether this is approved or denied tonight, we can have some more information on what the current volumes maybe are on Silverthorn. I don't know if we'd have them. And what the expected traffic volumes are on a Silverthorn, what a collector street is. But obviously, traffic engineering's already looked at this and analyzed it in 188 units. We typically say that a housing unit generates 10 trips a day. So if you have a single-family home, it's 10 trips. If you have 188, you're going to have 10 trips. So you're going to have 1,800 trips coming out here. And doing my math, and what I remember from a previous apartment project we had in front of this board recently, on collectors' streets, we generally say between 12,000 and 15,000 vehicles a day, I think is what we said last month. So we can go back and look at that prior to April 14th. So adding 2,000 vehicles to a street that's supposed to have 10,000 to 12,000 vehicles. But we'll pull all that information again together. But didn't know if Commission had any other questions on traffic or...
Any other questions from Commissioners?
I got a question. So currently, how it's currently zoned, how many units can they put on that property right now?
I don't know if they have a site plan for what's currently zoned. It would be, I was thinking about that over there, too. It's a very good question. If you look at the site plan, Jason, so what you'd basically see, thank you, Jason, you're great work. So you would scrape off that top right there, and you wouldn't be able to build that. So you would still put four 48-unit apartment complexes there. You wouldn't have the open space in the middle, and you wouldn't have a community building. So you would still, I mean, whoever came in here would go, well, I'm still, I mean, I don't know. Even if this gets built, we don't know if they're going to build four 48 units, or they're going to build something different. And that's the same thing the neighbors continue to say tonight. They were told it was going to be Good Sam, but you guys don't approve Good Sam, and you're not approving this project. You're just approving, is this a place for apartments, and it's already currently apartments? So, but that, Jason kind of alluded to, I mean, he was thinking the exact same thing I was. I mean, you just chop off that top two acres and go, well, they wouldn't build that, and they'd lose all their green space in the middle and move their buildings at a different Y or V. So. Other questions for me?
I have one, Mr. Chair. You said that there wouldn't necessarily be any change in the number. What's the maximum that is allowed?
They can build as many 48-unit structures as they want on the property, as long as they meet the parking calculations. So there isn't a number. So anytime you zone the property, just like you need to zone it to single-family, they don't say, well, how many single-family units are you going to build? They can build as many single-family units on there. If the demand is for large lots, then they build them on large. They can build them on small. They just have an ability to build what their market will bear. Thank you. Yep.
Okay, any other questions for Jeff?
Yes, Mr. Schmidt. Will they be back to us then with a plan?
No.
Site plan?
No. Okay, no. Once the land is zoned, then they go get the building permit. What, and that's what, again, I wanted to clarify tonight. They still, if you approve it, it goes to City Council. This rezoning, not a plan. If you deny it, it will go to City Council with a rezoning, but not a plan. We do not approve plans.
I just wanted, that's what I was confirming.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions?
One more question. There was a discussion about the alternative access point. Sounded like a lot of different conversations took place. Was there any that were part of traffic engineering or planning?
I think the gentleman that was up here, he said he talked to traffic engineering, and they said, yeah, it's feasible, they could do that. But they weren't approving it, they weren't denying it, and, but it's, yeah, it's, those things are feasible to do.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other last comments? New testimony?
Just a question, sir, if I could.
Come forward, please.
I'm going to be sure, trying to understand the process, so as I'm getting it more.
Okay, I'm Randy Joyce again. Mr. Schmidt, is right? I didn't understand that if something is denied, it still goes to City Council? Didn't know that. Deferral just stops for the temporary, then? I mean, it wouldn't go to City Council?
For a while.
Okay, I did.
Thank you.
Didn't know that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the audience? Okay, not seeing any. We'll close that portion of this testimony and move to a potential motion by the Commission.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve item number nine.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve item number nine as presented. Any discussion?
Again, we're a land use, and is this a good use for this land? It already is apartments, so we're just changing it. My thoughts are, and I'm going to express this, is that once it is rezoned, if we do pass it that way, that the neighborhood and the developer can work out maybe changing that driveway to help out. But again, you have the transition from the RD1 into the RD2 there. So we are doing that, our transitions, like we normally would do. Traffic studies, like Mr. Schmidt said, that by the time it reaches council, they could maybe have some more studies done, so they would have that information for them. And the residents, landowners, have a chance to visit with City Council then on that issue when it gets to them. Seeing what I see, I would be in favor of this rezone.
Thank you, Commissioner Gasper. Any other discussion?
I would agree with that. I mean, we look at, you know, a couple of other things that have came through in the last couple of months, and if we had this kind of transition in those areas, you know, a lot of those neighbors would have had no problem with that going on. So I mean, looking at the overall, you know, RA2, it's a small chunk of everything, just like Jeff said. I mean, they can eliminate some of the stuff and still do currently how it's, you know, the four buildings, 48 units going up. So it's a good transition to have there to help protect those homeowners that are over there. When it comes to property values, I mean, there's that transition all over town that we try to protect the homeowners from being built right next to apartment complexes. So on property values, I don't really, I mean, it's a street that's made to be busy, so I don't see property values a problem at all.
Okay. Other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I agree with Commissioner Gasper and Lucky. And the other thing that's good about this plan is the transition between the townhomes and the apartment buildings. And I also agree with Commissioner Gasper that further study between now and the council meeting would help on the traffic so that we can help resolve some of those issues that the neighbors raised, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, it seems that everyone involved is amenable to those kinds of discussions, and that would be a reason for supporting this on my part.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve item number nine. Any other additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to item number 10.
Item 10, 6337, 2017, rezoned from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban and O Office Districts to the S2 Institutional Campus PUD for Allowed Forms located south of East 24th Street, east of South 10th Avenue, and west of South Cliff Avenue.
Good evening. Diane Decoyer with Planning. The applicant for the rezone is Eric Willitsen. He spoke a little bit about this on the previous rezoning at 26th and Cliff. And the owner of this property is Avera McKinnon Healthcare. The applicant is proposing to rezone from the RS Single Family Residential on the west side, just adjacent to South 10th Street, and the O Office Districts up against South Cliff Avenue to the S2 Institutional Campus PUD for Allowed Forms. The property is located on South 10th Street and South Cliff, just, let's see, just south of East 24th. Avera McKinnon is proposing to rezone 1.6 acres to allow for future expansion of their campus. Without an initial development plan by the owner, the planning office has concern impact of traffic generation, housing displacement, and incompatible physical development adjacent to single-family homes that will exist on the west side of South 10th Avenue. Avera doesn't own all of those. There are some that are still owner-occupied. The S2 PUD District requires an initial development plan before any building permits will be issued to Avera in the future. Because the subject application is consistent with the Shakes Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan, staff does recommend approval for the rezone, and I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions from the Commission? Seeing none, thank you. Is the applicant present?
Again, Eric Willitsen, Willitsen on Engineering here, representing Avera McKinnon on this rezone. We approached Avera McKinnon to ask them if they would be willing to rezone, as Jason indicated, or I'm sorry, Diane. Indicated the property on the west half of the block is still zoned residential. And even though all the houses, except two on the very north end, have already been razed, all the properties owned by Avera, because they were still zoned residential, would have required us to provide a 30-foot level C buffer yard against that vacant property. So we asked Avera, would you be willing to rezone now rather than later to enable us to not have to provide that buffer yard? And they agreed, that sounded good. Their eventual plans would have been to rezone this as part of their campus anyway. Now seem to be, like I said, a good time. They've already built a parking lot on the east half of that. They don't have any solid plans right now. Uh, they don't have any solid plans right now as to what they're going to do with it. Um, but like I said, they've essentially razed all but two of the houses and it will eventually be some type of, uh, campus development for the hospital. Um, so I guess I put this up there. Uh, you're right, or Diane was right, all the properties on the, on the west side of South 10th Avenue, uh, do not belong to Avera. There are three that are highlighted in yellow there that are still owned by, uh, other owners. Uh, they're listed on there. Um, we have attempted to contact them to explain the project. Uh, I think the owner has, has contacted a couple, two of them, I think, and I'm not sure if he's been able to, to contact the third. Uh, but, and, and again, we will be back in front of this board, uh, with a conditional use permit for the car wash that, uh, affects those three houses. Uh, obviously I think it's Avera's intent to, uh, acquire all the properties, I believe, between Cliff Avenue and Seventh Avenue, 24th Street and 26th Street at some point. Uh, that's their, I believe, master plan, uh, for the expansion of, of the campus. Um, so again, we understand there's some properties across the street that, that will be affected and, and want to work with them to, to, uh, ensure that they're not adversely impacted by, by the development of this. But, um, I think staff is in support that, yes, this is where Avera's going. Uh, they own all the property and now is the time, they've agreed, like I said, to, uh, read, have that rezone to their campus.
Okay, any questions? Any questions?
Nothing about this, but, you know, just a side thing since we are having a housing problem and, you know, Sioux Falls houses are going off the shelves. Have you guys ever thought of basically trying to relocate some of these houses? I know it's nothing to do with this, but I just know how much a problem we're having in this price range.
Right.
Getting, you know?
The two that remain there, in my opinion, are in fairly good condition. There's still people living in them. Um, the others that they've razed, um, were in pretty dire state of disrepair and, and it wasn't economically feasible to re, to move them. Um, they could, I suppose, move those other two houses and, and, uh, I would think entertain a proposition from someone if they wanted to, to buy them from them and move them off the lot.
Throwing out there that maybe I don't know if the city or whoever, but I think it's something that we?
The two that are left, people are still living in and, and they will continue.
You guys move farther over, try to come up with a game plan of maybe where we can put some affordable housing.
Understand affordable housing is, is much needed and, and?
I'm just throwing that out there as all doing.
Understand, very good.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Are there any audience members that would like to speak to this item number 10? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion from the commission.
Make a motion to approve item number 10?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item number 10. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, it just, um, I guess it makes sense for this particular property and seeing no neighbors to oppose it, um, I see no reason to deny it, so. Anyway, I would support this one.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Item 17, 6297, 2017, conditional use for on sale alcohol within 500 feet of a sensitive land use located at 6807 South Louise Avenue.
The applicant for the CUP, um, is the owner of Divine Nail Spa. I'm not going to try to say their name because I'm sure I'll get it wrong. Uh, the property is located in a strip mall at 6807 South Louise Avenue. The property is zoned as C2 Commercial and the applicant is requesting to serve alcohol to their clients that come in for nail spa services. The CUP is required because they are an RE3 form and located within 500 feet of a sensitive use. There's residential located just to the west of this property. Um, at West 74th and South Louise Avenue intersection, there contains other commercial businesses, including an existing restaurant and bar as well as Wolfie's Liquor Store that is located within the same strip mall. So a similar use in that they also have alcohol. Parking will not be increased or decreased, um, based upon this request. There will not be any additional need for soundproofing due to this request. A security management plan is required and will address lighting and safety issues. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature and extent of the work proposed, staff does recommend approval for the conditional use permit. And I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions from the commission? Seeing none, is the applicant here? Come on forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Tan Nguyen and I'm gonna be the new owner of Divine Nail Spa. And, uh, we used to own the business, this type of business before and we serve alcohol for the clients and it's just a small portion, as much as like a little glass, just for them to rewind after work and to help them relax. So no selling, just one glass for clients.
Okay, very good. Any questions?
You sure?
Thank you. Are there any audience members that would like to address this item? Not seeing any, I'd entertain a motion from the commission.
Motion for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item number 17. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. I believe that is the last item on our agenda. I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for adjournment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.